So we're going to go to Washington County Fair.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, be led by Gina Rose.
Really?
Yeah.
Our pledge of allegiance to the blood of the United States of America, in the spirit of brotherhood, righteousness, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll tell you a funny story. For those wondering, the traffic light on Bass Street, Front Street is going to be resolved hopefully in two weekends. It's part of the supply chain hell that's going on right now all over the place. So we'll be getting it fixed. But Sheriff's deputy that was going east on Front Street, I was on my phone parked, and I'm watching this deputy just stop at the light. And you probably know by now, it's a four-way stop, red flasher. And he's sitting there, and sitting there, and sitting there, and starts moving the phone. And I'm like, I think I need to call you back. And I get out of my car because now he's got four people deep at Front Street. I'm like, roll down your window. I'm like, it's a flashing red. It's a four-way stop, go. He's like, oh, it's flashing.
I didn't say anything.
And this is why we need an operational traffic light really fast back in the village. Okay, I can get a motion that the minutes of the June 26, 2023 meeting be approved. I'll see if they accept or if you raise the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the July 10, 2023 meeting be approved? Trustee Cormos?
Second.
And as trustee Raymond, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We should probably turn down our two microphones, Jen, because we're interfering with each other tonight for some reason. It could be that, too. Mayor's announcements, three things tonight. I just want to thank the Saratoga County Fair and the job that everybody did up there, Jennifer Flutten and her entire crew. We had some highs and lows in terms of weather throughout the week. Tuesday was a light crowd, Wednesday was a really heavy crowd, Thursday, Friday, we're back down a little bit. Saturday was probably the busiest I've ever seen the fair throughout the day, except for a special concert, I think, years ago that they had had. But Sunday was kind of a mix-in-between, but it led to a lot of fun, generally not many problems, your conventional fights from youth that we had our place actually get in front of instead of like go to fruition this year. So great job by them and by the fair security on this one. So we didn't have as many debacles going on that come sometimes with these. The one debacle we did have was the cell service, especially in the Rising Tower. And I'd be summarizing that through the county's office of emergency management because they were trying to reprogram some of the tower solutions and monitor it all weekend. But once Saturday hit, and it was just so busy up there, it wasn't working. And the fair is willing to house a tower, it sounds like, either permanently or temporarily. If they were to put a tower on wheels, they call it a solution for the week, it would require regulatory approval still. And so it would have to be done well in advance of the fair in that scenario. So at least it's on the radar, and we'll make sure that we actually send notices out to any other cell companies that the OEM has contact with. So they know that T-Mobile, I think, held up better overall, but in AT&amp;T, but there were still some glitches with cell services throughout the weekend, and that's not good for safety reasons. Last week, I had a great meeting up at the county building, Steve Bolger and Karb Basile of CDTA. And we talked about a number of issues related to the CDA topics that have been going on. Karb had said to me that he had gone on YouTube to see our meeting and saw a four-hour meeting and thought, boy, we must have had a long agenda that night. Only realized it was mostly four hours about CDTA. And he says, that's not really supposed to happen. We don't want that relationship in the areas we cover and serve. And so he was apologetic for, you know, creating a little bit of chaos in the situation. But I said, listen, at the end of the day, it's about solutions. And Ross Farrell, who had presented, is actually moving on from CDTA. He's going to be going to DOT, actually, for their public transportation unit. So make sure you welcome Ross when he comes into the building, because I'm recently down there. But nonetheless, a couple of things came from that meeting. Number one, seven times a day, starting either late August or early September, there will be service at the county social services building on the 450. So not every 450 circuit will do it, but there will be select 450s that will go to there and then back onto the normal track. Number two, he went through some of our traffic situations and was monitoring the buses, et cetera. And he saw for himself some of the issues we flagged, especially Malta Avenue and even higher up the hill ultimately. And he's a believer that if we do move that stop that is going northbound from Malta Avenue to something near Alatirco, the parking lot that the Village of Jones is, we have the ability to do a bus shelter there, basically a back-putting shelter, because we have the room to do it in that manner, and then possibly get the bus off the street as well, or at least a little bit more clearance to get traffic around it. And so Megan Corrigan and I are going to be talking on Thursday about this. She's kind of taking over for Ross with respect to this project. And they're also willing to talk about some of the issues around Double Day Woods and McMaster Street. But in his opinion, based on the ridership data that he had, and I did a copy, but he'll be sending us soon, we have 90 total round trips per day on CDTA stops in the Village of Boston Spa. That's all stops, about 35 of which are at the Malta Avenue stops in each direction. There's a belief by CDTA that by putting the social services stop in, that will alleviate a good number of the Malta Avenue stops from being utilized. So it'll be interesting to see what the numbers turn into ultimately in that respect. But it was good to see him kind of hard with the data himself that day. Again, it was a very positive, refreshing discussion with somebody that cares about the village and cares about any place that they serve and doesn't want to see that kind of, let's say, not-so-happy relationship between CDTA and the municipality itself. So thank you to Steve Bolger for putting that all together for us. Finally, Jeff Garis from DPW gives a list of streets that will be paved most likely this year. Now, he's got to still run through some budget, but he's nominated four streets that are on his list and due for repavement this year. If for some reason they can't make it this year, obviously they roll the next year automatically as the first of the list, the top of the list. But right now, he feels confident in getting through at least 10 of these 12 in some form or another. And those will be High Boulevard, Court Street, East North Street, at least part of Malta Avenue, and because of the size of Malta Avenue, that might need to be done in chunks, John Street, Lower Boston Avenue, Grove Street, Pine Street, Park Street, Rosewood Court, Trumbull Avenue, and Liberty Street. We'll get this list on our website at some point to make sure folks can see these. But again, it is not a guarantee that the streets will be done, but it's at least give you a little warning that you are on our hit parade of streets to be repaved very soon. And that is all I have. Let's go to liaison reports. We'll start with Sean. Since I just saw your thunder, I'll let you at least finish the thunder on before you start. How's that?
All right. As you said, that was the payment schedule that they worked up. Last week, they had some water digs. Had some water digs and catch basin repairs. And they're also doing ADA ramps, I believe they're on some on high and some other locations, and doing some drainage work and prepping a portable speed board sign. Didn't realize that we...
Yeah, we do. You have to basically go recharge every time you use it, though. It's not a very convenient one, but the police are trying to get those hotspots taken care of.
Right. And assisting with repairs to police vehicles. And again, some prep work will have to be done on all those roads that the mayor listed as far as catch basins and ramps and whatnot. They usually try to get ahead of that before they go through and pay. So one thing he wanted me to bring up is people are still putting out brush and grass clippings. DPW has stopped picking those up a couple weeks ago, at least, if not longer. So please bundle and bag. And you know, bundles should be three or four-foot lengths with some kind of cord that is biodegradable. So please, if you know an eight or whatever, let them know. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Sean. Let's go to Bernie, then.
Just briefly, I will start with a young entrepreneur that lives by the fair. He had a killer season, especially on Saturday. Delicious lemonade was for sale as well as limeade. And so I encourage people to look next year.
Strawberry lemonade was really good.
Yeah. But we just want to congratulate Caleb for all the hard work and success, and also promoting PSBPA efforts for their concerts. So just good overall around location there. Just real brief, they are currently working on a car show. They will be, their applications for car entrances has currently been opened, so people can start applying now. There's been a lot of people already asking, but they're always looking for volunteers. So if people want to volunteer for the car show, reach out to dana@boston.org. I know that they need a team to help out with various, various tasks. Just the upcoming things, there's, again, concerts in the park from 6:00 to 8:00. And the 4th of August will be, excuse me, 3rd of August will be extra social. And then the 4th, the next day, will be movies in the park. And I don't know what movie it is. I forgot.
Lila Lila Crocodile.
Lila Lila Crocodile. I don't know what it is, but it should be different. Arts committee did not have a chance to email me, but I encourage people to look at their Facebook. They've been promoting. They're going to have their, words are hard today, apparently. They're having their summer series on the porch at Brookside. There's a concert on July 30. And then also, there's sign up currently for plein art classes. There will be two. So please make sure you go to their website and also their Facebook page and sign up.
Thank you, Liz.
Just a question. Can we get a sign for High Boulevard? Because there's a couple of folks in, I think, there was a sign. It just doesn't seem to be a sign on the street.
I think you mean a sign like High Boulevard Street, as the street sign you're talking about?
No, no, the little signs that say you got a bundle of your trash.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Direct that. In fact, I think I know somebody that lives up there that probably planted them.
Plant it for you. That's no problem.
I was thinking Jeff, to be honest.
I don't know all the neighbors, and some of them are leaving their messed up.
You got it. No problem.
Be a good reminder. The only thing that I have is Park and Tree that last week. And most of the topic of discussion is to, which we'll be dealing with lately, is to potentially apply for a grant, which we do have the match money in the budget. So it's the follow-on grant after the park, the Urban Forestry Inventory and Management Plan. And this is a grant for, actually, you get money to do maintenance, like pruning, removal, planting, et cetera. So the timeline is very tight. It's due August 15th in our next meeting, and it is 14th or something.
14.
14. So we wanted to get approval at this meeting, and we hope to make the deadline.
Thank you. Trustees report. A few things I'll draw off of this. It was included, I believe, in the attachments. Total July sales tax receipts, which are usually for two months earlier, but this is talking about when they were received. The total was $16 million, $85,000 and change, which was 17.63% higher, which is tough to believe, actually, after a 4% drop the previous month. The village received the distribution on July 21. Water bills have been calculated, including no meter read fees, and are ready to be mailed in time to reach residents by bill date of August 1st, with the due date of September 1st. Total of non-meter read residents came to 265 with a total anticipated water revenue of $13,250. And overall, the anticipated utility revenue for billing cycle 2023-2, that's what we're billing for right now, is water, about $483,950. And sewer, $131,242. When we run comparisons, we do it with the previous year, same period, because there are seasonal issues that come in our water and sewer use, basically. And the answer is that they are, give or take, 10 to 15% higher on both numbers. This is the first period that sewer had a 3% increase, the first 3% increase, soon to be a 5% increase on both, based on the budget that we had passed in the resulting resolution that came after that. So things are looking up there for sure. Nice to have that additional revenue as always. That is that. No presentation, no old business, no new business. Guess what? We go straight to public comment tonight. But I will warn you, three things that will be happening, so that we don't have to go back through public comment necessarily here during the motions. Motion B is amended to take away liability waiver that was originally in the contract with Fund One, and they have put through a $2 million insurance certificate that's being reviewed by Carla. So just be aware that there will be an amended version, just eliminating a liability waiver paragraph that was in there. There is a green light fiber agreement that we will be looking to approve as well, that is like SLYC, basically, their competitors. I probably shouldn't compare them, but in this case, Greenlight is offering to, for the location of a pop cabinet in Union Firehouse, which is like what SLYC did at Eagle Mat Lee, they will provide Union AC unit to keep that area cool, the fiber service, internet service for the firehouse itself, and also fiber service for right here in the library. So we felt that was a good additional benefit in this situation, and they are willing to do so. So that is the green light agreement. And also a $1,062.50 expenditure for a Dell i5 computer for the building inspector, building department, in the purchase of that. Those are three things that are not on this list that were added late to this and were vetted through the trustees earlier, or actually one of them is on it, but it was just amended. But they were all vetted through to the trustees. And would you like to say anything? I'm sorry. You might want to turn that on.
Just like this. This isn't doing much. Just mention that the F, the motion, is going to be modified, so I might...
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry about that. You're right.
Yeah. The motion made by trustee, seconded by trustee, that the public hearing be set for the 8/14/23 meeting of the Board of Trustees at 7:01 PM to consider approval of the 2023 Village of Boston Spa comprehensive plan update. So we've changed the word.
Consider approval of proposed local law number four?
No, yes. Cross out proposed local law number four, because Carla informed me there is no law.
Approval of 2023 Village of Boston Spa comprehensive plan update. Okay, so those four changes in there. Now that we've done that, five minutes is the limit. Please be courteous and direct your comments to the board, as you know. Who would like to go first? Nobody in the room? Ray, I kind of sheepishly puts his hand up and... Reminder, Raymond, you assume that does want to speak. This would be a good time to put your hand up. If you do want to speak and public comment, so that we'll look right along. We don't have anybody else in the house. We don't see any hands up. Ray, make sure you turn that on with that button, and you're quick to go.
Okay, Ray, on the 16th, I'll work. Couple of things. I just want to make it clear to the board and everyone else that there is an events committee or an events task force, rather, in this village. And we are going to be putting on, or assisting put on the village family fun day coming up August 20. We are also looking for a lot of help. So anybody that can volunteer, there will be, we do have our Facebook page, correct?
Yeah.
All right, we have a Facebook page. And there's also going to be, which we published on there, a Gmail account. So if somebody wants to email us that they can help, there will be, there will be.
What's the Facebook title?
Boston Spa Events Task Force.
I think I need to do B Spa, that's the...
Yep.
And it'll be B Spa Events at Gmail, if that's available. Just so people can email us to us that, and we have some sort of verification that, you know, somebody said they can help us out. So, and I also wanted to let folks know that only the members of the events task force can speak for the events task force. There's no one else that is allowed to speak for us. If you have a question as to who's on the task force, get in touch with Dana, myself, Anna, and, you know, the others. And Andy will let you know. And Mary, and Donna, might as well go through them all. And who else is on there? Mandy?
Mandy.
And Lori?
Oh, Lori.
Yes.
Lori O'Connor.
Lori O'Connor. So we're the ones that you want to contact if you have any questions or comments or anything pertaining to the upcoming family fun day. No one else is allowed to speak for us. Okay. Two things that I have, you mentioned, Sean mentioned, the village is no longer picked enough. I sort of had to talk to one of my neighbors, because they hired the service, and the service wasn't aware of this aisle. And it's like, I mean, I can't do that. And, you know, I hate to step on neighbors' toes, but I just wanted to let them know. One thing I'm requesting is that we get in touch with the garbage services. I believe the two bigger ones are Twin Bridges and Twin Heights. Get in touch with them and let them know that all the streets of this village should be picked up. I've had to call three times in the last month to get our bags picked up. So they should know that that, they can walk them down every street. They don't skip streets.
Jennifer, you have a contact to make.
The other thing is, they also are not aware that we have quiet hours.
Okay, I called recently. You broke that up to me, but I will bring it up again tomorrow.
Well, what I, I don't want to tell you how deep you got. Okay, you know that. But I think we need to send them a certified letter with a copy of the ordinance, because they, when I called about it, at 5:00 to 5:30 in the morning, with the empty dumpsters throughout the village, and I can hear the ones from here at my house, and I'm sure it works differently. I was told, well, they got to start early because they got a lot of work to do. And we are not aware of any ordinance. So if we send them a certified letter, say, there it is, don't do this. You know, it's just a thing. It's courteous. And they're like, you know, people up at 5:00 in the morning. I didn't even know there was a 5:00 in the morning. So if we could do that, it would be a big help. Okay?
It's when that little hand hits five, and the big handed says, well, it's really, it's really not my time.
Tell that lady who lives with me about that. She won't like that.
Yeah, it's early. Not.
She'll give you a harder time than I do.
Okay.
All right, that's what I got. And thank you. Oh, no, I'm sorry. There was one more thing. Those of you that went to the fair, I thought one of the best things I saw there this year was Sparky. I don't know if you know who Sparky was, but Sparky is a little tool that they use that looks like a dog in a fire truck, and they talk to kids. Well, I want to tell you, the kids were so thrilled with that, as were some of the teenage girls and boys that, you know, were like, hey, how are you doing? And they were all sorts of, all upset by it. But that was one of the best learning tools that I've ever seen. And if we could see our way clear in this village to find a grant or something to help us afford one of those for the fire department, they could use it up for the schools, they could use it at every village event that we have, any time of the year, doesn't matter. It's just a great learning tool for kids. And it's entertaining itself. Okay, it really is. And they had a great time with it, and there were no negative comments about it whatsoever.
Our really inspector, David Fount, while you were speaking, let me know that all three garbage companies have been notified by his office at quiet times. So we will agree up on that. But they have been made aware of them by the village.
I haven't called them on Thursday afternoon.
You got it.
I'll let them know. But yeah, we got to look into getting Sparky for the fire department as a tool for them for fireworks. I have no idea what cost this. It's, I think, more than that. Whatever the cost is for it.
Who had it?
Really is.
Who had it? Who brought it to the fair?
Union fire company firm were able to borrow it. And I don't know who they got it from.
Dave's following up. He said on the garbage company stuff.
Okay.
Multitasking here on your comments, but we got you.
Yeah, if it was Rock City, I don't know. But it's, hey, Rock City, go for it.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none. Sean, it's going way too well. Taking a motion of the mayor. Oh, hold on. We got more response. Sorry, now. Do you want to respond to anything? Good. No. Anything? Anything? Nothing here. Taking a motion that the mayor be authorized to execute the attached mandem contract for annual service. Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Raymond, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Taking a motion that the mayor be authorized to execute the attached Fund One Entertainment Services LLC contract for family fun day with the removal of the liability waiver paragraph. Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Raymond, discussion. We need a microphone. Sorry.
That's for the 10 bouncy houses?
You got it.
Question, do they, can they afford that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
We were reviewing a lot of things today, just to make sure on that note. And that is easy, that part. So, yes.
Okay, because I think the main reason they had so many was because of COVID. And I was wondering if so.
No, they're just, they're a bunch of different types of bouncy houses and what they were doing. Like one slide, and one to like makeshift vehicle and things like that. So there were just different types for different kids and different ages, basically, for the last year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Taking a motion approving the attached Labella proposal for, actually, let me remove the attach. Taking a motion approving the Labella proposal for DPW garage evaluation and design, offering as the mayor to execute.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Raymond?
I'll second.
Trustee Fundanza, discussion. And I think you all saw the fee update that was sent today by Ruben. Thanks to him and Joe for getting that. Joe's returned vacation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Taking a motion to board grant a waiver of the $50 building permit fee for the National Bottom Museum visitor center banner. Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Cormos, discussion. We've been advised to do this on a all non-profit basis, not an individual basis here. So if we do this, we should be looking to do this for all non-profit that come for such a waiver, correct? That they ask for. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Taking a motion that a change to the fee schedule be approved as follows. Appeal to the zoning board appeal, which is $50, and zoning board appeals the termination fee to $50. Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. There was nothing, I believe, for the appeal. I think $500 for the determination.
Yeah, that sounds right. So that's low, right?
And we're just trying to make sure the appeal has a number on it definitive. Yeah, pretty much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Taking a motion that a public hearing be set for the August 14, 2023 meeting of the Board of Trustees at 7:01 PM to consider approval of the 2023 Village of Boston Spa comprehensive plan update. Trustee Cormos? Trustee Raymond's going to be there in a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Taking a motion that the Park and Tree Board be allowed to submit a grant application for the DEC 2023 Urban and Community Forest Street Grant Program UCF II tree maintenance for a maximum total project cost of $62,500 with the village's contribution of maximum of $12,500. UCF two tree maintenance for a maximum total project cost of sixty-two thousand, five hundred two dollars with the village contribution of maximum of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And that the mayor be authorized to sign or execute any necessary documents for that submission. Trustee Formos? Trustee Fundanza, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Taking a motion approving the extension of the village's accounting contract with EFPR Solutions Incorporated with the following changes. One, the change of the contract period to June first, twenty twenty-three until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Two, removal of the budget support item. And three, lowering of the not-to-exceed-missed-lane task portion of the agreement to four thousand dollars. Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
My question is, is what happens after December thirty-first?
Just, we, we decided that for all parties involved that maybe making it the calendar year would make more sense because it gets you through the A U D process each year and gets you to the next part of the process, which would be the budget. So you can make a decision if you want to continue with that same company or not, with budget still a month away from when you started.
So we're still planning on having an accounting firm?
Yes, yes. We just, we realized that maybe setting a full year and especially now that we're changing official years and everything, it didn't make as much sense. And that was the conversation we had.
Well, what's the budget in that, Kenny?
No, honestly, what they did was lower the monthly, but what they took out in, you know, really separately is the A U D work. So it's almost a null compared to what the monthly was before ultimately. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Taking a motion approving an amendment to the birdhouse contract between the Village of Boston Spa and Arts and Sciences Creative Community Incorporated, ASK, which makes the following changes. One, extension of the end date from July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for no additional monetary consideration. Two, requirement that ASK in the village maintain the birdhouse structures in displays in their current locations in Wishville Park with the existing safety fencing and signage unless or until the village and ASK agree to remove the structures and or displays prior to the end of the contract. And three, that ASK shall provide an affirmation from ASK's insurance carrier that the structures and any injuries caused by or from such structures are currently covered by the insurance certificate provided by ASK to the village. This motion authorizes the village attorney to draft such an amendment, which she already did. And as long as it is consistent with the requirements above, authorizes the mayor to execute such an amendment. Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Formos, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Sorry about that. Taking a motion approving the village water hookup request by the property owner or owners of three eighteen Emmett Street, town of Milton, outside the village.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Raymond, trustee Fundanza, discussion.
Who is Emmett Street?
Yeah, we had a clear pressure issue there. We had just given somebody in Emmett Street a connection with the same issues. So we're treating everybody equally, but also warning them that their pressure is not going to be in the perfect DOH world, but it is an approvable level for the village to still approve it. All favor? Oppose, motion carries. Taking a motion approving the contract extension between the Village of Boston Spa and Lobella Associates to continue using Lobella as the village's. Did I, are you? Okay, that's a different one. Sorry. Yeah, now, okay, I, the Ruben fee schedule was for this one, I should have said. Taking a motion approving the contract extension between the Village of Boston Spa and Lobella Associates to continue using Lobella as the village's primary engineering firm using the same terms as prior year's contract extension and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Raymond. Trustee Fundanza, discussion. Sorry for the confusion on that, but I think you guys need to switch and I just boxed that a little bit.
How, how much are rates going on?
Three percent. Yeah, there were a couple. I think there's some categorization differences that may cause slight differences if you try to compare apples to apples, but the general tiers were three percent, he had stated. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the, or authorizing the agreement between the Village of Boston Spa and Greenlight Communications and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement after final review by attorney Bitner approves of such execution. Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Taking a motion approving the expenditure of one thousand sixty-two dollars, fifty cents for a Dell iFive computer for the building department. Trustee Fundanza, trustee Formos, discussion. All favor? Oppose, motion carries. I think that's all the other motions. And I think we're at other business, if anybody has any. Having no other business, no executive sessions necessary. Can I get a motion to, can I get a motion to adjourn that can, can I get a motion that the vouchers be ordered to be adjourned at?
Yeah, but excuse me, I thought you wanted me to say.
No, no, we don't need it. We'll explain why if you need to. The email approvals were sufficient not to necessitate it. That was the answer. That helps. Taking a motion that the vouchers be ordered to be adjourned at seven thirty-seven P M. Trustee Formos? Trustee Raymond, discussion. Better not be any. All favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. We'll see you in three minutes.